Right, okay, can you hear me there? Oh, it's all off both sides. Okay, got it. Okay, cool. Thank you.
Township zoning ordinance appeals July 24, 4:00 PM. Madam Secretary, roll call please. Owen. Princess, here.
Uh, talker.
Here.
Dexter.
Here.
Stuart.
Here.
Kerr, here.
We're all here, obviously.
I'm sitting before Katrina. Is there something you want to say?
Yes, please, thank you. I would like to remind you that it's very difficult for the recording and for the recordings that we have to speak into our microphones so it's properly recorded and try very hard not to interrupt or talk over people. That makes it very hard for the the recording and for the reporting. So if you could do that, that would be really, really helpful. Thank you.
Um, I'd like to entertain a motion to amend the agenda.
Uh, with the amendment, what are you going to do with the amendment?
Sure, I can, I can accept it, but I just need to know what the amendment is. Well, just know what needs to be amended. No, but I guess I'm going to add something. Where are you going to add it? And what are you adding? It's her second.
Yes.
Patrick Stewart is second. And the amendment is that we've invited each council two to fifteen minutes um prior to deliberation today. But that's that's the amendment to the agenda. All in favor?
Aye.
I oppose. Motion carried. The agenda has been amended. All right. During the public comment section, I'd like to begin with counsel. Um, is there anybody that wants to go first?
You're not doing the approval, you're not following the agenda, the approval of minutes and other comment?
No, because they're not ready. They approve of minutes, not that. Not the other different.
The transcripts? We just got them yesterday, and so I haven't had an opportunity to review them yet.
Okay, because there are several model mistakes.
Okay, I'll get it.
Continuing on with public comment.
There should be a clicker in the podium. In the way, in the podium, either on the shelf or in the little door. Good afternoon, everyone. Rebecca Milliken on behalf of the Southern Coast Alliance. Hold on. Sorry.
It hasn't come for its time.
Okay, let's try again, better. Good afternoon, everyone. Rebecca Milliken here on behalf of the Southern Coast Alliance. Um, it is pleased the chair or the party on this afternoon um is that I would hopefully speak for about ten minutes, um and then we would like to reserve the remaining time, whatever's left, um for a few comments. We can bring the conclusion of public comment, um just to wrap up questions or issues that arise based on how there's comments. If that's all right with the chair, we'll proceed that way. Thanks. So I think we know where we're all here this afternoon. The Supreme Court, I think it was almost two years ago today, handed down a decision in the South Dakota Coastal Alliance case um that redefined the agreed party test. First of all, uh, I'm not going to go into great detail here about what the three prongs of the test are, I'm going to shorten it for you and say the three elements are prior participation, the proceedings, um a demonstration of interest and right, and thirdly, specialty. I don't believe that the first prong, the participation prong is is at all disputed um in this case, so we'll just focus today on rights and interest and specialty. Agreed party in the technical term under the zoning enabling act, um but I may also refer to it as standing and deliberations standing might come up, and I think we all understand we're talking about the agreed party test and that's okay. So this decision came down two years ago, um and the net result of that decision was that the Supreme Court lowered the bar to establish agreed party status for zoning appeals. So what's happened in those last two years? This test doesn't tell us a whole lot about how compliant um the court uh that's not the role of the Supreme Court, so we've got to look elsewhere. And we did this a little bit at our last meeting. Um, Mr. Howard ran through three cases that have come down in the last two years that have applied to the South Dakota Coastal Alliance test. Um, those are Ciscola, Posa, and Beverly Hills. In each instance, the court um found that the appellant had demonstrated standing. I've looked far in line, as far as I can tell, over the last two years, there are zero cases that did not find standing under the South Dakota Coastal Alliance test. We also talked last time about Deer Lake. Deer Lake is a key holding case that was brought by a group of property owners um who were challenging the issuance of a special use permit um for an access for backlot property owners. Those, those facts were um pretty similar to what we've been talking about here. And the Supreme Court agreed and they talked about it in the opinion, where it talked about, um, you know, the difference in the prior case law where generalized concerns have been held to be insufficient to demonstrate standing. Um, but the Supreme Court had this important footnote, as put in on twenty seven, saying, yes, but um in some cases, especially neighbors, may be differently or more severely impacted or burdened by an involvement, especially in the case where um perhaps the zoning ordinance was ignored when this applied. And so in those circumstances, standing may well be present. And then type the Supreme Court looked at Deer Lake, cited that case, and said, gee, the facts are very similar to the South Dakota Coastal Alliance situation. Perhaps that's an indication that the Court of Appeals decided that case incorrectly. So rights and interests. Uh, this is step two in the three-part test. There are a handful of categories of rights and interests that traditionally get in line is to standing. Property rights, riparian rights, these are closely related in our case in that the Eli Wallace family and the Dean family in particular um have asserted property rights and riparian rights that would be impacted by that involvement. Navigational rights, this speaks to um the interests of business owners like Dave Engel, Mark Van Howe, and Mike Johnson, who are Coast Alliance members whose livelihoods depend on a safe and navigable Kalamazoo River. There are pecuniary interests such as those expressed by Don Schuman, who's a um substantial donor to the preservation of many of the natural areas surrounding the property at issue. Um, but also pecuniary interests of the business owners, I previously mentioned. There are also a category of aesthetic and recreational interests. Those would be the type of interests expressed by both of the Alliance members, such as David Swan, who um bought a, bought a residence in Tocqueef, just um one of the main reasons being that he would like to visit State Park and Patty Burkhold's natural area on regular basis, just the fact that that probably was greater regularity and frequency than most other people. Lastly, I would mention um conservation and legacy interests of the state center Patty Burkhold's who spent a lifetime promoting environmental interests, and that is the namesake of the natural area that's part of the state park and directly adjacent to the more of the subject property. Having identified those interests and rights, take us to the third step, special damages. These are four factors that the Supreme, Supreme Court suggested could assist in analyzing whether or not special individuals are present. There's a couple I'd like you to pick and focus on, which would be um the type and scope of change or activity proposed um and the immediacy and degree of alleged industry injury, and pretty closely related as the proximity um prong. And the next two slides will kind of explain why those are of particular relevance. One last point there was special damages. The burden of proof, the quantum, if you will, that applies here is some evidence, is that of the, that the exact wording of the Supreme Court. That's something that is less than a proponent of the evidence, that's really less than what you would have to prove in a civil lawsuit. Um, it's certainly much less than beyond a reasonable doubt that was you know, CSI and uh law and order. But it's just some evidence, which I would suggest to you is sort of a gut instinct about what is some evidence. And what we've provided you is affidavits, documents, photographs, that is the evidence that you all will be willing to determine whether special damages have been shown and whether standing. So as we're sort of scrolling through these photographs, I would challenge the board to think about if the Coastal Alliance does not have standing, who does? We've got here a picture of the Kalamazoo River. We see where the Beale property is in relation to the laydown area, which has been cleared out just up the hill from their property. That is a special damage that is impacting them much differently than pretty much anyone else in the city. These are some aerial views that demonstrate that a little bit better. Here we see the view from the Beale's dock, which looks directly at the, where the mouth of the marine basin would be if it is constructed. Recall that recall that Nick Wallace um in his affidavit talked about paddling the Kalamazoo, Kalamazoo River and enjoying nature and the natural areas. And imagine how it would be with, with the introduction of dozens more boats right in this area. Those are special damages. The Dean family, I don't have a photograph here, but the Dean family only accesses the old lighthouse property that they owned by boat. They fought several lawsuits to block the construction of roads and keep those dunes undeveloped. And so this graphic changed to the character of the neighborhood they had thought to preserve would be affected in a way, or they would be affected by those changes, but in a way um different from most anyone else. Again, because of their proximity, the size of the development, and the other factors that were identified for special damages. This is another view of the Beale properties that their area business owners, we talked about Dave Engel, Mike Johnson, Mark Van Howe, they're navigating the river sometimes multiple times a day, they or their customers. If they decide to rent fewer charters or decide that safety concerns me and those who run out of regent skis, those are special damages. I would point you to um both the Beverly Hills case and the Ciscola case about the airport traffic. David Swan, we talked about his recreational interests. This shows the view from the Patty Burkhold's natural area towards the Marina property. And you can see that um those views have changed, that is special damage to someone who frequently hikes in that area. This is a graphic from the Army Corps of Engineers document that was included in the record as a result of it having been before Judge Kengis during the remand proceeding and identified one of the views individuals who will be, uh, one, it's one look at who might be impacted. That, did that tend?
Yes, that, okay.
I'll, I got this thirty seconds. This just kind of buttoned the rapping up. It gives you a sense of the very significant changes that have happened on this property over the last twenty years. Um, and this is even without the rain being filled. Again, I will have you reflect on the special damages factors that the Supreme Court identified in your couple slides of that. Two more things. I said, I, I assume that North Shore is going to um impress upon you that the Coastal Alliance needs to demonstrate that it is agreed by the decision of the planning commission. And I think all of you are familiar with section nine, ten, H of the zoning ordinance, and that is the substantive basis of the appeal that the Coastal Alliance has brought. And this body doesn't have to concern itself today with nine, ten, H. But I would have you look at nine oh six B, which talks about the intended purpose of the ordinances that follow after it, such as nine, ten, H. Um, and the reason these ordinances were passed was that the township board recognized that nuisance conditions, destruction of property values, and difficulty for waterfront property owners were resulting from um unregulated usage of waterways in the township. That is exactly what we're talking about when we say that the coastal alliance has agreed by the decision of the planning commission, and it is recognized in section nine oh six B. Last, let's just identify a couple of takeaways to think about as you're deliberating. North Shore has talked about houses and docks in different conflagration. That's not why we're here. This is about a marina. The Michigan Supreme Court test announced two years ago, lower the bar. The courts that have applied that new standard since 2022 have agreed, they use that terminology about lowering the bar, and they have found standing existed in the three cases that have applied the test. Only one Coastal Alliance member under the doctrine of representational standing has to be an agreed party in order for the Coastal Alliance to also be an agreed party. Last, I will leave you with the thought that standing is just a threshold in gray. Does that then determine whether or not the Coastal Alliance prevails on its appeal? Don't have to agree with our stance on the appeal. It's just about whether we have the opportunity to make our arguments, our legal arguments about the ordinance. Thank you.
Chapter, I would suggest the report goes, we previously had before reporters' transcript be part of the official minutes of meetings. I think to the extent the CBA wants to do that, again, I'd be appropriate to go ahead and have that motion before we forget. Don't do that in the course of this meeting.
Uh, so I hope that those have the court reporters' minutes as the official minutes of our meeting, sorry. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you. Thank you all again for the time and the attention that we've put into this matter. Hopefully this is the last time we we spend the afternoon together for the last, at least a little while. Uh, one topic, topic that keeps coming up is this idea of how much the Supreme Court decision changed the law. Was it a minor clarification, or did it rewrite all of Michigan law on this topic? Coastal Alliance has attempted to make the argument the Supreme Court essentially rewrote the law in this area. It didn't. But don't take my word for it, please. Let's look at exactly what the Michigan Court of Appeals, the Michigan Supreme Court, said in its decision about the decision itself. Here's the language. This is what the Supreme Court says in its majority opinion, which is binding law. In light of the modest clarification to the law that this opinion makes, so they're saying this is just a lot of, a slight modification, and breadth of existing precedent that has been retained. So in other words, the majority of the body of law has been made, has been maintained, and is still in existence. Because of that, we disagree with the dissent suggestion that this decision will upend decades of stability in Michigan law. This is the binding and authoritative decision of the Michigan Supreme Court. The Coastal Alliance is not quoting from the Michigan Supreme Court decision. The Coastal Alliance is quoting from a dissenting decision, which is from a judge that does not agree with the majority and is voicing their reasons for why the majority got it wrong. And by definition, the dissenting opinion contains the unpersuasive arguments of the dissenting judge. Why do I say unpersuasive? Because they obviously could not convince the majority to change their mind. Now, we can debate back and forth how much this changed the law. And we'll talk about why that's important, but And we'll talk about why that's important, but when it comes down to it, we really just need to know what the court said and what that standard is. And then to look back at the previous decisions that were made by this body and by the circuit court. To see if those decisions already apply the correct standard. If so, they can and should be used as a guide for you tonight. If not, then you're certainly free to look at the issue fresh while applying the. Supreme Court's instructions. Now, in the draft resolutions that your counsel has prepared for you, they've laid out the requirements for someone to be an agreed party. But I want to look behind those a little bit as to, and look at the instructions that the Michigan Supreme Court gave us. And the guidance as to how to find or not find those elements or how to look at this case. Here's what the Supreme Court said. The appellate must provide some evidence of special damages arising from the challenged decision. In the form of an actual or likely injury that is different than the effects on others in the local community. And I've tried to underline and highlight some of those items that are important. Secondly, the court said it remains true that generalized concerns about traffic congestion, economic harms, aesthetic harm, environmental harms and the like are not sufficient. So in these two quotes, the Supreme Court gives us some good guidance on what does and what does not. Qualify as being agreed. This is how the Supreme Court has indicated you or anybody applying the Supreme Court standard is to proceed. Now, I would ask you to keep these instructions in mind. As we look back at a few of the decisions by the ZBA and the circuit court beforehand. My thought is that if you do that, you will see and you will agree with me. That the ZBA in the past and the circuit court in the past already applied the same standard that the Michigan Supreme Court is articulating. Is the proper standard going forward. So on October eleventh, two thousand seventeen and April, in April, two thousand eighteen. This zoning board appeals determined that the coastal alliance did not have standing. In doing so, the zoning board of appeals made a few observations. First, that the complaints voiced by the SDC in its presentation of affidavits would apply to any development of the property in question. That this body said establishes the general as opposed to the specific nature of the SDC plans. The ZBA also said that the coastal alliance had not been able to articulate how it will suffer any special damages. Different from damage that would allegedly be sustained by the general public. The ZBA also said, even if North Shore's proposed development had any special impact on the state park. Or the natural area contained within the park, the standing to contest the action of the planning commission would rest with the state of Michigan. Because that's who owns the state park, not with the SDC or not with Ms. Burkholtz now deceased. The point is, and this was, of course, your chairperson was, was on that committee at that time as well. The whole point, though, look at the words that are used, general public. The development of the property, any development of property versus the approval itself. The cause of action would rest with the state of Michigan, the general public, again, not with someone in particular. In October of two thousand eighteen, uh, excuse me, in February of two thousand eighteen, the circuit court issued an opinion. Again, holding that the coastal alliance did not have standing. And in doing so, the court first summarized the claim being made in general by the coastal lines. They contend that they will suffer impacts substantially more extreme than suffered by the community at large because of their unique interests. Again, look at that language, that is the comparison that the Supreme Court. Demands is made. The court then went through the specific complaints made by the coastal alliance, beginning with state parks and the river, those public areas. And said this, somehow affecting the enjoyment or view of a state park in the river. And being adjacent to the Paddy Burks coast natural area clearly is not different from the community at large. That makes sense, that's the public areas. Went on about recreational activities, look waters of Lake Michigan, my Kalamazoo River is shared by the community at large, not a special interest. And about property taxes and public services. It seems ludicrous, the judges, the court's words, not mine, to argue that development of high end condos with water dock frontage. Would affect property values in the community and increase taxes because of public services. And, and all that is a factor considered by the planning commission on behalf of the community at large when it evaluates these requests. And business claims, business interests, they claim that because. Johnson's restaurant and marine owner upriver, Mark Benhouse Commercial Sailing. And David Engel, a port charter boat operator, operate their businesses on the river, have a special interest discreet from the community at large. Is beyond reason and common sense. The court then concluded. In short, the SDC members share the interests in common with the general public. The general, excuse me, which planning commission, the township and the Department of Environmental Quality are charged to protect. In October of two thousand eighteen, the circuit court, a different judge this time, came to the same conclusion, the coastal alliance does not have standing. The court began by laying out the standard that will be used. Increased traffic volume, loss of aesthetic value or general economic loss is not sufficiently alleged special damages to become an agreed party. Because those generalized concerns are not sufficient to demonstrate harm different from that suffered by people in the community. General, look familiar? That's the language that Supreme Court says is still the standard. This is the standard that was applied back then. Part of it goes through each of the coastal alliance's claims. On aesthetics, the court says, there hasn't been a showing that this court's, to this court's satisfaction, that there's been any, any unique harm to the SDC in the aesthetic basis. About environments, a mere possibility of environmental damage is not enough to show special damages.
Five minutes.
There has been no showing of unique harm that this court is aware of. Especially in light of the evidence that's been presented to support that this is an environmentally friendly project. Regarding businesses, I don't think there's been a showing that there will be a detrimental effect beyond predictions. That are made by people who are business owners, but they haven't shown anything more than a mere possibility. Speculation is not enough to say that businesses would be affected. If there is an impact. Not just members of the SDA, the SDC, but everyone in the area. Again, he's not saying there is an impact, but only if there is, the SDC doesn't have any different interest. And on the use of the public areas, there hasn't been a specific sufficient showing to show that there's some special injury to the SDC in that regard. If there is an impact, it's going to affect the community at large. In all four of these instances, the body, considering the coastal alliance's claims. Applied the same standard that the Supreme Court has articulated in its most recent decision. That's good news for you, it means you don't have to start from scratch, you don't have to blaze a new trail. You can look at those previous decisions or guidance and for confirmation that your decision is correct. Now, as you make this decision, I want to ask you to keep two things in mind. First of all, this is not about trying to prevent coastal alliance from being hurt. Believe me, they have been hurt, they have had their time, they have stated their position. We could spend the next hours talking about the meetings after meetings after phone calls. And the documents, hundreds and thousands of pages that have been submitted to this township, to neighboring municipalities for whatever reason. To state agencies and federal agencies. This is not about them being hurt. Second, this is about you applying criteria and instructions from Michigan Supreme Court. As you discuss these claims, I would challenge you to ask yourself. And even frankly, to ask each other as ZBA members. Some specific questions that come directly from Michigan Supreme Court's decision. If one of you, in your own mind, or you hear someone else bring up a claim of the coastal alliance. And it's a, well, what about this, I think, whatever, the claim that the Byleys can see this property from their dock. Ask some questions, and those questions are these. Is that a protected interest or a property? For example, do the Byleys have a protected interest that they. Get to see trees and not other people's houses from their property? How many of you have a house that's closer than that, that trailer that you can see from your house? Maybe you live out in the country in the neighborhood, but most of us can see a house from our homes. Do the alleged damages flow from the planning commission's approval? Ask that question. Or is it simply from any development like the previous ZBA and court concluded? Have they produced evidence of an actual or likely injury, actual likely injury, rather than just speculation?
One minute.
Someone saying, I fear that this will happen, I might do this if this development goes forward. Is not evidence, that's speculation. And finally, are the alleged damages different than what others in the local community would experience? If you canoe down the river next to a coastal alliance member. You're going to see the same thing. You will see this development if it's there, you will see the houses that are already exist, you will see boats. The coastal alliance is not unique in that standard, they have no unique rights as to the property, state park. Or to the public river that other members of the public don't have. And finally, I just want to make one comment about the claims that the coastal alliance just brought up today and put into draft. The court made it clear that new claims were not to be considered. And yet, what's in their affidavit and what's in the argument today? David Swan, Don Schuman, new claims.
Time.
And they emphasize Patricia Burkholtz, who is now deceased. So just ask you to keep those in mind, follow the instructions of the Supreme Court and ask at least one. Thank you.
Thank you. Is Mr. Howard still at that time?
Two and a half minutes.
Thanks, I'll be quick, I'll start off with Mr. Gabriel. The. The idea that more than one person can have standing is one that was, the Supreme Court was very clear. And it's not that somebody has to be. Only person that ever could observe something. Uh, it's not that you, two people couldn't see the same thing. It's the distinction is the quantity and frequency of use. And for uniqueness and impact of that. So for somebody who goes canoe every day, for example. Uh, they are impacted differently than other members of the community who maybe go canoe once or go canoe once in a while. And that's what the courts have said. Uh, in fact, in between, Mr. Gabriels read some language from the Michigan Supreme Court. But he left out some language that comes in the middle of some of his quotes. Uh, and that is, the court says, uh, and this is on page five hundred and ninety seven of the opinion. The court says, but we caution courts and zoning bodies against an overbroad construction allegations as mere generalizations to avoid addressing the merits of the people. While generalized concerns are not sufficient, a specific change or exception to a local zone restriction. Might burden certain properties or individual rights more heavily than others. A party who can present some evidence of such disproportionate burdens likely will have standing to appeal. Again, the court then goes on to cite that your lake case, which is surprisingly, the view is interested in this case. In this situation, and says that that's inconsistent with what they're reporting.
Thirty seconds.
Thank you, Mr. Gabriel cited a bunch of court cases from before this Supreme Court decision. Those were all returned by the Supreme Court decision, so they're, they're not relevant. And finally, I think that the, the, the important thing for you to do is take a look at that Army Court. Uh, document that is part of the record, um, and that's a document that shows you specifically. Where areas of visual impact are, Rebecca showed you an auditory impact on, it's scientific documentation for those flesh shows.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Yes, and other public comment, please leave it three minutes, give your name and address.
Good afternoon, I'm Bob Brown, three four one mainstream, I'm the board chair of the coastal alliance and I care speaking on behalf of our members. I want to again make briefing marks on why we are here, which is, as you all know, just a close standing. To challenge the township's two thousand seventeen approval of a special land use Marina permit to North Shore of Sagittar. As I've said before, Mr. Gabriels, North Shore's attorney, tries to pretend that we're here to challenge the BUD and the housing building. Well, that's not true. We are challenging the Marina permit full stop. This Marina permit violates township zoning ordinance, which states no canal or channel may be excavated for the purpose of increasing water drainage. It further violates the township standards for special use, special land use, section fifteen point four zero. Which expressly prohibited uses that cause environmental degradation of designated natural resources or degrade the essential character of the area. Back to standing. As you know, in July of two thousand twenty two, the Michigan Supreme Court made a fundamental change to the criteria for standing. By clarifying what it means to be an agreed party. The Supreme Court wrote, and I quote, and this has already been referred to. A specific change or exception to local zoning restrictions might burden certain properties or individual rights more heavily than others. A party who can present some evidence of such disproportionate burdens likely will have standing to appeal, end quote. The court provided an example in their ruling, and again, I quote. Lakefront Property Owners Association was agreed special land use applicable. When the association alleged that the addition of docks may disrupt and destroy the shoreline and its ecosystem. Causes riparian owners who share the shoreline, the members have an interest beyond that, motherland users. The public at large, or even similarly situated neighbors, end quote.
One minute.
Again, Mr. Gabriels might try to persuade her, has tried to persuade you that new criteria are tweaks and minor changes. It is true, last December, circuit court judge in Cogan reviewed Mr. Gabriels for that characterization. Saying that, and I quote, it's important for the court to recognize that in reviewing this opinion, this was a significant change in the law. End quote, and note that this was the judge residing over the case, Judge Antcogan, contrary to what Mr. Gabriels just told you. Our coastal alliance team has provided material evidence, some of which for good reason did not exist in two thousand eighteen. All of the evidence shows that the laws Beale and Gueye families are disproportionately burdened of the special land use Marina. Thus meeting the test for standing. Thank you, thank you for. Thank you for your service.
Thank you.
We are aggrieved.
Excuse me. Name and guess.
My name is Fran Van Howe. I live at 2378 Lake Shore Drive, San Diego. We are aggrieved by the proposed marina in relation to navigation of the river in the river mouth. My husband worked and I have sweetwater sailing charters, and we've been sailing out of Sagittuck for many years. There is a great interest in getting out on the water. I'm happy to say that there are now six sailing charters here. Also, many small rental boats, pontoon, electric engine runabouts, kayaks, paddleboards, private vessels, and fishing and sightseeing charters. I have never seen the river so crowded in my 50 years of living here. That is why addition of this large marina, proposed large marina at the mouth of the river poses such a burden to charter boats and other vessels. Our Sagittuck Channel is small, narrow, and can be very rough. The small turning basin at the entrance to the channel, where sailboats can turn their vessel into the wind in order to hoist and lower the sails, a necessary task. Most rental boats coming down from Sagittuck are required to turn around and head back up the river there. They're not allowed to go through the channel and out to Lake Michigan because it's too dangerous. This is where the many boats from the proposed marina will be entering the river. I want to emphasize that. The many, whoever knows how many and whoever knows how large, they will be right in that congested, important area. Our channel in Sagittuck is not a deep draft of a commercial harbor entrance like Heskey and Holland, where there's plenty of room.
One minute.
As a captain charter, sweetwater sailing respect that a marina in that location can be a hazard to navigation. A marina there would be a burden as a restriction on the safe use of the turning basin at the opening to the channel mouth of the Sagittuck River. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Actually, the project is still open. It's kind of awkward to be in the style. At least today, there's more visibility with ZPA members. That's appreciated. I'm Dale Harrison, 3108 623 Sagittuck. I've heard the Venice Council talk about the four standards. That's not really what the four standards are. Three standards. And if you get a chance, can you open up the court's opinion, Supreme Court opinion? Do you have that handy? Because that's what we go in to look at. We do that?
What are you going to get?
I don't know. I'm not sure the pages, because I got a different copy, but there's only three issues that we look at. The first is, did they participate in the proceeding before the PC? Yes. They have legally protected interests? Yes.
Mr. Harrison, excuse me. Could you speak into the mic? Thank you.
Get closer. Yes.
Yeah. Thank you.
So they participated in the proceedings before the PC. That's one of the conditions. The second, they have some legally protected interests, they're partying under the second priority. And third, the most important is they have to show some sort of damages. That's maybe a significant or a matter of degree of another parties, other members of the local community. Those are the three tests. So if you're now looking at those issues, claims that they made about, or no issues, their new wetlands, boat traffic, humans act, you're now looking at those issues. Those are where the standing issues come in, and they've proven substantially that they need the standard. So I think, let's look at those three standards and view that. I've never heard any discussion about what those standards are by UG. I think it's time to be looking at those three standards that the court adopted, not that they turned, because those are misdirected. The court basically threw out all the party decisions, and some of the cases, all the cases have been excited, aren't relevant any longer. So you're really dealing with those standards, Supreme Court decisions, so please, please. So in a few minutes, maybe a half hour of going through these. Excuse me. Let me plug.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, ZPA, and I've made it here tonight to speak and engage on this ongoing multi-year effort to prove that I and we have standing to challenge this proposal in development for the river mouth.
Excuse me.
My name is Nicholas Wallace, and I am in the 3524 dugout row here tonight to speak on behalf of myself and my family. Madam Chair, in 2018, you voted in favor of us and the Coastal Alliance having standing the first time you voted. My family means the newly established criteria for standing established by the Michigan Supreme Court. One of the Supreme Court judges agreed with you, giving an example in writing, "The similarities here to my family are difficult to dismiss." Quote, "A specific change or exception to local zoning restrictions might burden certain properties or individual's rights more heavily than others. A party who can present some evidence of such disproportionate burdens likely will have standing to appeal." Quote, "For example, a Lakefront Property Owners Association was agreed by a special land use approval, and the association alleged that the additional docks may disrupt or destroy the shoreline and its ecosystem because, quote, 'As riparian owners who share their shoreline, the members of that association, have an interest beyond that of the other lake users and public at large, or even similarly situated members.'" If those docks were constructed, that could be argued as speculation. We can't wait for these things to be constructed for the evidence to actually manifest after the fact. I grew up wading, swimming, and learning to identify birds on similarly situated shoreline. I shared the shoreline with the site by only a few hundred meters. The proposed marina site is very visible from my dock, nine acres of laydown area on the top of the duni behind my cabin. I shared the navigable water around the river mouth, boaters, and I had to share with the marina and more large boats trying to navigate that tight area. I kayaked the shoreline fishing, studying trees and plant life. I looked for all sorts of wildlife on our stargaze. This land and river inspired me to study ecology in university and intimate knowledge of how this landscape functions through direct experience over two decades.
One minute.
As a riparian owner who shares the shoreline, I have an interest beyond that of other river users due to sheer proximity and the incalculable value that this river and these woods have injected into my life force over the years. There will be an observable negative impact on the local ecosystem. Prior to 2018, when the first house was constructed on the lake, it counts as a river mouth, which is really the last undeveloped major river mouth in the state of Michigan. To the zoning board, you have a responsibility here today to ensure as little damage is allowed to occur at our destroyed river mouth. Over the years, you've surely noticed one side of the room is much more packed than the other side. We've always been here, participating, not speculating. There's many people consistently speaking out. It's not speculation, it's real concern from the community. The passion and care that our community has for this land is an observable powerhouse of dedication. Please do the right thing. Listen to the scientists, historians, and those who historically and presently know occupied and utilize this land and water and give my family the standing we deserve. And one last point, if I could.
Your time.
Can I finish one last paragraph?
Please.
Okay. Contact the central here. The river is already overcrowded. We've lost the undeveloped river mouth title. The clear cutting was already taking place, and all those 2,000-foot marinas in the middle of publicly funded and acceptable wild spaces were confirmed to further degrade their stability oversight. The wetlands, the wildlife, the history, and the reconciliation of the past present and future land use of our community and our state is in your hands. Michigan has lost 75% of its pre-settlement coastal wetlands, and 50% of all wetlands in the state are permanently gone. Thomas Woods, dugout road, and behind the Edison property are representative of the 1% of pre-colonial forests that weren't entirely logged. Every development with a large footprint amongst or adjacent to the sensitive areas represents another paper cut and further fragments, what astronomically low habitat remains statewide. Please consider this fact in the deliberations today. Thank you so very much for your time.
Thank you. I didn't know I was on that paragraph.
Love the paragraph.
Are there any other open comments?
I'm David Ingle, 3041 Indian Point Road, Sagittuck, Michigan. Charter fisherman for 46 years, only job I've ever had, navigating the river. The caretaker of the Pawawami Gun Club, which is a 1,400-acre piece of property in March that's up straight, and also the president of the Sagittuck Sport Fishing Association. We're the ones that plant the salmon every year and try to get them to return to our river year after year and keep sport fishing going in this area. Salmon need to find areas, clean cold streams and get up to them. We don't need any kind of obstruction where they would go up into a current pushed area and spawn and don't reproduce. To say that, to do a magnitude, to do a marina of this magnitude and to say that when it comes along, common sense of things, to say that it won't cause problems down at the turning basin and getting in and out of the harbor, just makes no common sense whatsoever. It's just not a great place for it. They need to follow the rules like everybody else, have a few docks along the shore. They can have plenty, they got plenty of area to have a few docks there. They don't have to have a giant marina man-made, create waterfront. And if you're going to prove it for them, we've got a lot of area that we might want also do the same thing. So think about how many of these you're going to pass up, okay?
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Holly Anderson. I live in Sagittuck City, and I'm also on the Coastal Alliance Board. I just wanted to, I just wanted to make a couple of points. One is just stressing that almost all of what Mr. Gabriel was talking about was 2018, and the Supreme Court decision was 2022. So just undershoring that he was talking about old news. And the other one just gives more color to what Fran was talking about and how crowded it will be. We're talking about 50 yachts in that very narrow part of the river. So it's not just like a couple of boats there. So for sailing charters and for commercial fishermen, that's a lot of traffic. So I just want to be sure you get the picture of that, what you're talking about. Thanks.
Thank you.
Madam Chair, someone on Zoom would like to speak.
Hallie, you can go ahead and talk.
Nope. Sorry. Can you hear me?
Yep.
Perfect. My name is Holly Ingle. I reside at 3171 Lighthouse Way in Sagittuck, Michigan. I represent Sagittuck Township as an appointed member of the Harbor Authority Board. And in speaking today, I'm speaking on behalf of my own interest and the interest of our business, Best Chance charters. Our family consists of four licensed captains, myself, David Ingle, Hunter Ingle, and Zach Ingle. We run three charter boats, which run approximately 125 trips per boat per year between April and September. Based on my family and our history on the Calmazoo River, I can say with confidence that the proposed marina with numerous smeggy yachts at one of the narrowest points on the riverway poses a major safety risk. I'm also concerned that the water diversion within the mouth of the river will force the natural ecosystem to become imbalanced and directly impact the fish migration. The DNR plants over 100,000 fingerling salmon that come back within three to four years. It impacts that. You know, you talk about the narrowest part of the river, so the mouth of the Calmazoo River, it will have a direct impact to our fishery. And I don't know if you guys know this, but our fishery is a multimillion-dollar tourist attraction. So we bring in a pretty substantial amount of tourist revenue for the township. And basically, you know, as we said before, we have to abide by the laws that are intended to protect the safety of all boaters and our fishery. So I just ask that you really, you know, support this. Thank you for your time and consideration and uphold the law in this situation.
Thank you. Anyone else? I think no other. I say that the comments have been closed. Due to the order of Dutch and Koga, January 2024, the ZPA must decide if the Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has standing to appeal the decisions of the Sagittuck Township Planning Mission relative to north shore. To have standing, being a party agreed under MCL 125.3605 and MCL 1253606, three criteria must be met. The first being, appellate must have participated in the challenge proceedings by taking a position on the contested decision. I'll throw that out to the board for your comments. On to this first. I agree. You're asking for us to make comment on. I would agree that the appellate who has participated in the challenge proceedings, and you can look at a letter dated June 30, 2017, received by the Sagittuck Dunes Third, 2017, and has been involved in all the proceedings, including court and our meetings. So I would agree that they have been involved from the very beginning. Are there any disagreements? No. Ma'am, do we need a formal vote on accepting this first prong? If so, all in favor that the appellate's have met this first. This prong.
Maybe put it in the form of a motion.
You want it in the form of a motion? All right. So move that the appellate has, what the, let's use the Sagittuck. Okay, the Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance has met the first criteria of the Supreme Court decision. Second?
Second.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. I have a question. Hearing none, the first prong of standing has been unanimously accepted. Second question is, does the appellate or Sagittuck Dunes Coastal Alliance claim some legally claimed, some legally protected interest or protected personal community area or property right that is likely to be affected by the challenge decided?
I'd like to think about the saga between Doctors Lee and Kendall. There are, I'm sure there are more than I think that have, but there are documents here that I'm not going to ask you to get into the details of.
Thank you.
There are documents here from Dr. Lee, very thorough, critique and suggestions from those folks on the project. We have several, several answers by Dr. Kendall, and a specific answer by Dr. Kendall. We have a core of engineers, long discussion of questions and concerns on these issues. What's important about this is that these are specific concerns. They're not talking about OG within the environment. They're talking about his problems with the construct, specific problems with the construction of the, specific problems with the size of the piping or the way the circulation system is going to work, and how those things are going to affect the dunes, the wetlands, the protected species, and the river. It seems to me that this clearly indicates a specific likely It seems to me that this clearly indicates a specific likely. Likely that there's that there's damage. And I think it's clear. Now, I don't, I picked this because it's so clear, put it that way. I'm not referring, I'm not negating the other claim of the nature of it. That's my viewpoint.
Thanks, Patrick. But I think that's more, if I could say more, it was third wrong rather than the second.
Actually, both of them.
Well, it just.
Yeah.
Do we believe that the Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance claims some legally protected interest or protected personal. Community area or property right that is likely to be affected by the challenge decision? And then simply have they made the claim?
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
I'm sorry that the thing I didn't, I didn't add to that.
Okay.
That many or all of these things are protected interests. The river is a protected interest. The. Dangerous species are protected interest. Wetlands are an interest. All these are protected interests. Sorry, I missed something.
Right. I do believe the SDCA is a party of some legally protected interest. As they are representative, representative non-proc coalition organized, quote. For the purpose of working cooperatively to prevent, protect and preserve the natural geography, historical heritage. And rural character of the Sagatuck Dunes coastal region in the Kalamazoo watershed. This has been shown and if you look at the letter from the Olson, I don't know how you pronounce your BZDOR.
Bisdok.
This is.
Bisdok.
Bisdok, no, I would never got that. And Howard dated September eighteenth, twenty seventeen. Page nine, first paragraph, including footnote eleven on the same page. That indicates that they are in fact a representative group that has interest in the Kalamazoo watershed. Anybody have anything different than, again, the second prong?
I disagree on both, both of those. I don't believe that they have a legally protected interest. Maybe under this property ownership in the past, but just because a group come of it, excuse. And decide that they wanna have an interest in something government has already given legal right to have. The studies, there have been plenty of studies presented by us, none of which has more than afforded the stuff fired, right? So to say that they, that we should consider them now, I think it's it's not fair to the people who submitted them or the people on the board. You wanted to say that we've considered these documents. I don't believe we have properly considered them. We had never discussed them in public. There's been several requests that we do that. We set out to do that at one point, never completed that. So I can't accept arbitrary acceptance of that argument that they have legal. A legal standing. I just can't. The interest from this group, Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance. Is wide ranging and comes from a wide variety of people, only a few of which could possibly have interests. And that has not yet been proven to me that this is different than what other people are gonna experience by going up and down the river or by. Any of the other arguments that are presented.
I don't mind being simplistic with my interpretation, but I'm simply reading that there is a claim. That some legally protected interest has been made and that's the second prong. Am I being too simplistic with this or? I mean, they have made the claim, right?
Well, I think the key, the key state is likely to be affected. In the second year. I think if you look at all the things, this is one of them, but all the things are involved. There's a also a aggregate. Collection of likely damage that's been talked about specifically in detail. I think that's. It's important.
Well, again, I appreciate that, but I do reply back to that a claim has been made.
And I agree, I agree that a claim has been made, yes.
So in motion, I'd like to say, somebody would love to be in motion, but that Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance. Has claimed some legally protected interest or. Or protected personal community area or property right that is likely to be affected by the challenge decision. Okay, I made the motion. I don't know if that's proper or not, but I'd like to, it's like it's a second, it's like. Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post? Don't forget to. Third prong. Sagatuck Dunes Coastal Alliance must provide evidence of special damage arising from the challenge decision. In the form of an actual or likely injury to or burden on their asserted interest. A right that is different in kind or more significant in degree than the effects on others in the local community. And the phrase others in the community refers to persons or entities in the community who suffer no injury. Or whose injury is merely an individual inconvenience. And excludes those who stand to have injury to their protected interest or real property. Your dad, maybe. Which I seem to be wanting to move. All right, let's, we've already started some discussion. Let's open it up. What is the evidence of such a damage?
We'll go through it all again. But I think the issues involved in the destruction and the operation of the Dunes. On a technical basis, very specific on a technical basis, are evidence likely. Evidence of light injury, the discussion of the consequences of of those, those things. To the water table, et cetera, et cetera. I think it's, it's likely.
To the community as a whole?
Well, I think that it's not the community as a whole. It's, it's that, that, that affects people. That others are not affected. It's hard to, hard for me to think of a situation where. Someone who is, is involved in that part of the river and that part of the community, what's going on. Would have the same interest as somebody in the southeast part that doesn't care about the environment. In fact, the statistics are, it's about twenty percent of the people in the country do. And there are people who never, never exhibit. I mean, they've never gone through this. They're uninvolved. I think that the standard change of similarly situated to others. Has opened this up. It was almost impossible to meet this, this criteria when it was similarly situated. But I think by, by changing that to others in the community, the Supreme Court did. That's one of, one of the two things that opened up the system. And I don't think, I can't imagine others in the community that don't care about this subject.
Mary? My opinion is that I haven't seen specific damages. I have a hard time looking at all of the documents and specifically coming up with damages. And I haven't heard anyone actually say something that is personal to them when they're damaged. That I don't see someone else is also damaged. So when you're asking specific damages, I have a hard time. Differentiating what that really is. You know, reading some of the letters. And I'm not picking one on one, but you know, I'm not a captain, but I can drive a boat. I go out on a busy day. I've never hit a boat. I just can't imagine that. If I had a captain's license, I think that would be a lot better. I mean, I might get a little nervous, but I hit anyone, yeah. I just, I don't know what a specific damage would be. If I was in that position. So I'm not picking on anyone. Just, I just have a hard time. Because I just think that it's not one person, it's others, businesses not getting business. I mean, I would think that they would have more business with more people. So I, I can't quantify the difference. So. I wish somebody could come up with a specific damage to make, make me feel like we really have something.
From here, let's talk about the water table. The claim of coastal lands is that the water table could drive as much as twelve feet while it's constructed. And they could take years. The argument of Cook on the North Coast is this foot and a half or two feet. And they're both taken by doctors in the area where they have the, the right criteria to make those judgments. We can't, we can't make that good. But. The claim that the, that the water table is gonna drop that far and be there wait for a long time with death and the killings. That's the damage. And. With the examples and things, with the flow of the water, et cetera, et cetera, but these are real damages. They're not just. Generalized environment, environmental problem. They're specific. So that's just an example.
If I might add to that. Mr. Swan presented some information in writing in regards to all this and listed his qualifications, which were quite even done for you, I must say. And there was a couple of doctors who wrote opinions on this, but I think what one of them said and what they both agreed to was that. The water table will regenerate. It's just a question of how long it will take and for what size area we're talking about. I have a little mileage necessary. I've been in the drainage business for over forty years and I've done a lot of draining. And seen a lot of regeneration. And one thing that was not taken into account on this regeneration. Spinning construction. And the rainfall or snow now that might actually re-help refill this area. If in fact it drops the water table a foot or foot and a half. You know, what time of year, fall of the year, by spring, maybe it's regenerating. I don't believe there's any way in that area for anybody to pump the water down twelve feet. They do, they have to prove that to me. I mean, you have a massive set of pumps to do that. And the idea is that they're gonna, they're gonna build a copper dam lined with clay. To, to keep the water table where it, or let it, it won't go down a foot or two. And I believe that's doable based on my experience in construction. And I think it's a proper way to handle it. And I don't have the fear that the wetland is gonna be ruined by it. It's a small area and I think it will regenerate. No check?
I wouldn't, I wouldn't necessarily disagree with that. I wouldn't try to make a judgment. About which of these qualified people, right, will drop. But this is a question of as a party. Made a claim of actual or likely injury. And that doesn't have to be already there. It can be likely to happen in the future. And that's what this is all about. And I think that, that this subject, which. Who knows how it would, how it would come out in the end, is not what we're deciding. You know, we're deciding whether. One party has made a claim of, a specific claim of actual. Or likely damage. And I think this, the Sagatuck Dunes has, has done that. They've made the claim and they backed it up. With.
What are the special damages? What we're talking about now is that they provide evidence with special damages.
Special damages, one of the damages, damages to the native species, damages to the wetland, the protected wetland. Damage to this protected species.
And you yourself just said that there's two striking reports.
There are, but we're not here to decide.
But which one is evidence?
They're both evidence.
Put me up for the opposite side.
That's right.
So.
That's Jim. That's all.
Yes, question Patrick comes to. Are the damages. Different to the people in this lawsuit than they are to me and you? Who may never go on that property, may never go by it. How are, how are they?
They're not different.
Different than you and me. And why is their concerns or their interest in this thing different than what they are for anybody else? They have to show special circumstances.
What they have to show is there are others in the community that are not affected by that. That's your point. That's what the second step says.
Kind or more significant in degree than the effects on others in the local community.
And there's no question in my mind that they're different than others in this community. This is a big community. With people spread out, out across the community. And there's no doubt in my mind that there are people in this community that couldn't realize the obstacle around this room.
That's not relevant. I don't believe it. It seems to me it's all going up and down the river every day. Some days it's heavy traffic, some days it's not.
There are people doing.
Some boats go out some days, some days they don't. That's not relevant to you. It's relevant to them. But it's the same thing up and down the river. Nobody complains about other marines being built upriver or other interests on it. So how is this special? Other marines get built and that boat traffic goes right by these people's house or up and down and up here and in the base. So the boat traffic issue to me is, it's, it's non-special. It's, everybody has to deal with it. The same thing with construction down the road. Turn your head this way, you're gonna see this construction. Turn it that way, you're gonna see destruction because new houses are being built. I don't find that special. But this is special. I just don't see it. I get it. I feel sorry for the people involved. They have good arguments, but I don't believe they have special interests that they can throw. They're a bunch of modern people.
There's some Supreme Court, you know, my guidance. And by the way, I have made comments about.
I think there are two documents, but all of them, go ahead.
In the, in the page. Just after the Supreme Court stated the three execution, page number was the thirty conditions of twenty-seven, this is page twenty-eight. And it said, basically said. Is not enough to show with a party. Showing a special damage, not enough to show that the party is agreeing. It says also remains true that generalized, and it's italicized. It's italicized, so specifically noted. That generalized concerns about traffic conditions, heat, hot weather, environmentally, et cetera, et cetera, are not sufficient. But specific, by, by definition, specific concerns. I'm saying they're, they exist here.
I disagree. I don't believe that that wetland issue is specific enough. Relative to this party. I don't think so. I mean, there's other. Any other wetlands drained in the mouth of the river area? It's been defined as about twenty-three square miles. By the lawsuit's definition. When we go aggressive, such as that and other areas, I find are prepared. This spot is special interest. There's like these interests are widespread.
That's right, sir. I certainly understand, on both sides of the argument, but where I came down to is really is. Looking at, you know, the, the landowners, the environment of the Kalamazoo watershed. The critical dunes and the cultural heritage of the Kalamazoo River Mountain. And those documents that really kind of put me over the edge, the letters that from the state of Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. That was dated December first, twenty seventeen. They raised concerns related to the proposed boat basin. And the letter and accompanying orders from the Department of Army.
And the letter and accompanying posters from the Department of Army Corps of Engineers dated November 15th, 2022. And I believe that they, those two documents, from those two entities provided the information and the evidence of the special damages that is likely to occur.
Well, I'm switching gears. I'm going to the affidavit of Mr. Wallace, which was very impressive, as was your oral discussion. I, I, I don't agree with your position, however. And even though you're close and you use the water a lot, I think you're far enough away that you can use the other side of the river and, and be safe, especially as long as it's not during the season or Fourth of July or probably during mid-July. But then I, I appreciated your presentation and the fact that you still have trees, you're still forested on your property according to the diagrams I've seen. And that, what do you call that? What do you lay down, that, that lay down, that lay down position, from what I'm seeing, seems to be filling a hole on that property. It would seem to be well protected from looking at anything that could be offensive. I, I think your property is fine, far enough away, and you still have the same rights as anybody else on the river. And I hope you continue to enjoy it because we need people like you.
Do you need a motion? Unless there's further discussion.
There's one other thing that is unrelated to the discussions that have happened that may affect the, so that's the comments by the Supreme Court that, that an individual, gotta go back. Actually, actually, it wasn't that here. Well, it was a comment that, that an individual property owner adjacent to the property might have more concern about their situation than others that are involved. It was that fourth point that was stated. It's not relevant. It's a subject. It's a point in this.
Are there any other discussions? Special damages, evidence. The key, two key things we focus on. Need a question? Everybody to bond you. You need a motion? Rex, anything further, Dan?
I don't, you know, I've, I've been with this one seven years. And I vote in both ways, as, as we know. And I just am really torn because I see, unfortunately, both sides clearly. I think the property's been zoned as part two. It's residential. Property owners have the right to do what they want. The planning commission had the right to do variances. That was their right. And I don't want to go into the details of what one thought, one, whatever the rationale went into it. I respectfully acknowledge the concerns that as our community, we all have about preserving the beauty of our, of our dunes and the safety of our river. Although we already have a thousand boats on the river now, I, I don't know. And then there's that little rental boat thing where you go out on the circle things and who knows what danger they could prove on the river. I would not, Mr. Wallace, ever go out with those boats. It's a real danger.
Concerned about them too.
Yeah.
A lot of risk. No danger that they're navigating that river, man.
But I, I would entertain a motion. Does Webster feel like to make a motion?
I, I will. I, I move that the SDCA has provided some evidence of special damages arriving, arising from their challenged decision on the boat, on the channel, the canal, and boat basin.
Second. Stuart, seconds. Any further discussion?
Repeat there.
That the SDCA has provided some evidence of special damages arising from their challenged decision of the canal and boat basin.
Senator, motion?
Yes.
I'd like to just make a statement quickly before we go down this. I, and I choose this word carefully, respectfully understand that the members of this board have been torn by this. We've all multiple times, we have different views of it. And as I said earlier in a different meeting, this thing goes one way or the other easily. And I think the, as much as the legal counsel, all three legal counsels have, have been obtained, they've all eloquently stated their, their client's case. And I think this thing has, has been given proper due diligence, I think.
I'm wondering if, if the mess, the motion addresses all the issues? Or if you want to narrow it to? You said the boat, the boat basin and what else?
The canal. It has to be, they have to know of canal or channel and boat basin. So that's their challenged position. And that is, as I look at the evidence, and again, I mentioned those two documents that I think that are very clear that there is in fact a likely injury through this, the proposal of the canal or channel and the boat basin. So I think that they have provided the evidence of special damages.
Hold on, hold on, this. Webster?
Yes.
Hunter?
No.
Kerr? Stewart?
Yes.
Yes.
Three essence, two no.
Motion carries.
Okay, so therefore, are we looking now, when we've discussed those three criteria, is that you're looking at the resolution in regards to whether we believe at this point that the SDCA has approved, has provided the evidence. And they do, the ZVA includes that the SDCA has standing to a brief status of the channel. Is that where we're at now?
I think we've, we've gone through all three.
Right, that's what I'm saying. Is that where we're at right now?
All three.
So therefore, I will make the motion that the ZVA includes that the SDCA has standing of personal attorney agreement status to challenge the April 26th, 2017 and October 23rd, 2017 decision of the Sogat Township Planning Commission. And we would submit the resolution prepared by our legal counsel along with that motion. And rather, I'm thinking I would just want to read the whole document.
You want to incorporate it by reference or read it into the record?
Oh, I'd like to read it. Incorporate it by reference.
Would it be wise to use, use the suggestion a little bit on standing?
He just said that.
Yes, yes, yeah.
Waiting for a second.
Second.
On favor? Post?
Aye.
Roll call, please.
I always had to think about that one of these things.
Yes.
Right, sir?
Yes.
Hunter?
No.
Motion carries three, two.
I'm going to be adjourned.
Public comments? Public comments? Is there a public comment?
I'm going to write the rules for us. Say a motion to adjourn, please, first. Get it, hold on.
You're right.
And for you, if you want to vote it down, that's a comment, we're ready.
Motion to adjourn. Is there a second to that motion? No second motion fails. Now let's proceed with public comment. I think on people one made through the front top. Thank you.
No, I'm adjourned.
Second. Some, some more public comment?
Got a whole section on the floor.
On favor?
Aye.
Aye. To adjourn?
To adjourn.
Post? No. Post? No. What? No. Motion carries. Need a stern.